Attention, seeing motion carries nine zero.
Christine, we're just waiting on Jen Canelli. I'm sending her the link.
Oh, I thought she was on. Correct that. Motion carries eight zero. It's hard to keep track of everybody. We're eight. Just for the record, Jen, I thought you were on. We have a motion to adjourn. Can you vote on that? Thank you. Maxine Canelli votes in favor. Motion carries nine zero. Okay, everybody is on. And with that, I call the July fourteenth special meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxine Canelli, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Ms. Picko, does it get anybody, myself, Mrs. Vitale. We're joined by Superintendent Cummings and members of the Fairfield Public Schools. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us. I just had a huge thunderstorm happen here. If it happened, my internet is so much better. Well, if I go missing, Rita, the meeting is yours for pressure. And Gerber, if Nicko's missing, the meeting is yours. So hopefully the storms are through. We are going to get right to business. First item on the agenda is the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one enrollment update, actual versus projections. We're joined tonight by Dr. Parrish. Before I send it over to her, I am going to give it to the superintendent to give us a proper introduction.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent of Schools in Fairfield Public Schools. I'd like to welcome Dr. Parrish. Dr. Parrish is our Executive Director of Operations and Processes and is part of a role to be monitoring the enrollment, excuse me, throughout the summer and of course during the school year. So without any further ado, thank you to Dr. Parrish for being here tonight and please go proceed ahead with the with the enrollment update.
Thank you Superintendent Cummings, and thank you all for giving me this opportunity to share with you the enrollment update. As of July seventh, which was the date that the report was provided, the date of the report that was provided to the board, our enrollments are pretty much on pace to meet our projections. There are a few schools where we're closely watching the level of enrollment. For example, at Burr, right now they are in grade K. You can see on the report that there are forty-five students enrolled in kindergarten. As long as they increase to about forty-seven, they will be able to meet the number of sections that would be projected. So we're monitoring their enrollment as we move into the month of August. The other area or the other school that we're watching closely is McKinley. As you can see from the table, their kindergarten right now, the enrollment is low. I did cross-reference this with the enrollment this time last year. It was about twelve per class, so it was it was low, not quite as low as it is now. But historically, what happens is our families will wait until the week or the week before or the week of school starting to actually go in and enroll their student. So we're looking at that. In the event that the total number of students that we projected does not meet our projection, we'll look at dropping that total number of sections and adjusting it accordingly and working with the principals to do that. So typically what will happen is in the month of August, principals will start calling and confirming, especially if they're close to that threshold, either right below it or right above it, just to make sure that all of those students that we projected and have identified as being enrolled will actually show up. The other school that we're watching closely, particularly in grade and the kindergarten, is also Riverfield. Again, the enrollment is low there, but watching it closely, there wasn't a huge differential between this time last year and the current enrollment for Riverfield. So just monitoring that, as well as at Sherman. Right now Sherman is over the projections. We will again work with the principal to make sure that if there's a need for a fourth section, that we confirm that those students actually are going to show up. But we shouldn't need additional FTE because there are other schools in which the enrollment will not dictate a need for a full time, an FTE to be there. So we'll be able to move things around without requiring an additional hire. And so across the board and the other grades, for the most part, they're on pace to meet their projections. So we're in pretty good shape in spite of the situation that we're all dealing with and all of our families are dealing with. So we'll continue to monitor it, keep in close communication with the principals. They receive this report on a weekly basis. And as I mentioned, in August, take a really close look at exactly where we are in reference to, in comparison to our projections. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Parrish, welcome. I'm sorry that we couldn't meet in person, physically, but welcome. It's very nice to have you here. And with that, I'm going to bring it to the board to ask for some questions. Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you for the update. It's Jen Jacobson. I'm looking, I have a question, a couple of questions. One on Stratfield. I'm wondering our pre-K program that we have at Stratfield, and this may be an answer that we don't have right now, but I'm just wondering how that remaining in Stratfield from the pre-K is looking strong or not for this year as they move from that program into kindergarten. And so that's something that I'm wondering if you have an answer to that or maybe the board might be interested to know how that's looking. And then just in general, I had another question. What was it? Oh, under normal circumstances, I know, and of course people can enroll at any time. But given the circumstances that we need a lot of information for planning purposes as we come to reopen this year, and that's all kind of up in the air, and so we get final guidance, and we have our plan, and the governor decides what's happening in August with our numbers, is there any idea that we're going to try and push that as much as possible to get that in as soon as possible? Because because of the planning that we're trying to do for everyone right now really is, you know, very number dependent. So I'm just wondering if the district or you or anyone is thinking about how we can try and avoid last week enrollment as much as we can?
So to answer your first question about the pre-K feeder in Stratfield, that is something that we'll have to dig into and can provide that information as an update to the board. As far as really, you know, encouraging parents to do that sooner rather than later, of course, we would want to encourage parents to do that so that we can plan accordingly. But the other part of it is, is that all parents, regardless of which grade, they can opt to keep their child home and access remote learning. So in a way, the enrollment is tied to it, but it's also, there's that other part to it. So there is a survey that Superintendent Cummings is working to get prepared specifically geared towards that particular question. So we would have a better idea in terms of planning to identify how many teachers we need to support remote learning versus in-person instruction.
But they're still enrolled in our schools, right?
Yes, they would still be enrolled.
So just so the public's clear on that comment, they still need to be enrolled for that, right?
Absolutely. They do need to be enrolled. And then from there, we would determine which which type of instruction that they would be participating in.
Okay, thank you so much. You're welcome. And just for board members and staff, before speaking, please just for fair TV and the public to state your name. Mrs. Maxine Canelli?
Hi, Jennifer Maxine Canelli. And I just want to, Dr. Parrish, I just want to follow up on Mrs. Jacobson's question, which is so much of this would seem to be kind of not a moot point, but once we start putting out there to parents, are you taking the option of distance learning? And obviously that also involves a conversation of what's binding about it? When you commit to it, are you committing to it for a semester? Are you committing to it for a year? I mean, I know those aspects of this have to be worked out. How early will we be getting the definitive commitment from parents so that definitive classroom assignments can be made? Because obviously, as a larger district, we have the availability of efficiencies, that if there are twenty students across multiple schools to make up a grade, you know, you might be with students who aren't from your school. And I obviously hope that's what the district is considering, because I personally think one teacher having to teach twenty kids and then have two who are distance learning doesn't seem to me to be the best way to service them, that one teacher devoted to a section of third graders. But I don't know if that's the direction that the district is going. But obviously, these numbers completely change if you are start, yes, you are a Sherman kid, but you're going to be in the DL third grade, for example, and thus removed from these numbers. When will we get that kind of information? Or excuse me, when will you get that kind of information?
I'd like to jump, I'm sorry, let me jump in because I think that's going to get into some of the things I'm going to report out in my report, Ms. Maxine Canelli. I think those are really good questions. And this question about, certainly the mistake of this question about reaching out to parents, as Dr. Parrish said, that's something that we'll be doing. I think, I think there's data that I'm going to show you in the slides that kind of speaks to what parents are, to some degree are waiting on, right? What kind of what's going to make them commit one way or another, whether they're going to school or not, or whether they're going to do distance learning or not. And I'm saying whether they're coming to school or not, I'm talking mainly about our kindergarten, incoming kindergarteners. So that will definitely come up soon.
Okay. Yeah. And just for this agenda item, just for the boards and public's reference, I wanted us to have a starting point for July one. I mean, being that we, there's been a lot of talk about people moving into town, are people waiting to register their children for kindergarten? So I thought it'd be helpful as we, we have these conversations moving forward about reopening and who's actually physically coming back and who's not, just to have a starting point. So Dr. Parrish, thank you for providing that starting point. Does any other, sorry, Ms. Maxine Canelli?
That's right. My second question was also piggybacking. I'm not sure if this is what Mrs. Jacobson was getting at, but I just wanted to confirm with Stratfield, we are still assuming four classrooms a lot to the weekend? So the point being spaces, we're not having a problem with space there. Four classrooms will still do it. That's what we're set up for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Mr. Peterson, did you have your hand up before?
Hi, Jeff Peterson. First, Dr. Parrish, very warm welcome.
Thank you.
And I just, that's something that the chair just pointed out was my basic question. Do we have any sense, and this is probably an unknowable, if parents are at this point opting to hold kids back from kindergarten for a year? And the reason I think that this might be useful to have a sense of for future planning, obviously, is if we get a chunk in, you know, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, that otherwise we would have spread out over two school years. So I don't know if you've gotten any comment from parents or you have any sense of where that's going or anything, but I'd be interested to hear your perspective.
So we haven't received any information in reference to if parents are going to decide to just hold their kids out for the year. I think that whether, as we talked about earlier, whether or not they choose to do the in-person or the remote, they would still be captured in these numbers. So if they are completely just not registering, that's something that we wouldn't necessarily have that information readily available, but.
I get that. I just didn't know what you heard from some parents asking whether they could hold their kids out. I mean, is it, is it a conversation that you're having with parents or anyone's having with parents? But I know it's an unknowable.
Yeah, at this point, it's not something that has come up as a red flag or something that has been brought to our attention as a, as something that parents are opting to do. Those that have been in communication in terms of registration are there because they're trying to register. But there haven't been a significant number, to my knowledge, that have indicated that they're holding their kids back from registering.
So I hear that. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Piggybacking on Mr. Peterson's point, Mrs. Jennifer Jacobson. It would be interesting, though, to see if we did any outreach with our community pre-K fives to see how that was looking out of curiosity, because that might, to Mr. Peterson's point, we could be looking at possibly a very large incoming class next year. And that's important to know as we go into budget season and all of that. So it's not something I'm expecting for staff or anyone to do, but it would be nice if these pre-K fives outside are looking very full. And that gives us an indication that, yes, people are rich, you know, waiting a year, and we should anticipate that as we go into next year's planning.
Any additional questions? Yep. Seeing none, we will move along. Thank you, Dr. Parrish.
Thank you.
Moving on to Superintendent, sorry, Ms. Lieber, get your hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the last minute question. Jennifer Lieber, I'm wondering if the town has gone any data around homes sold? Like, do we have any way of knowing how many potential new families are moving in? There's data that says sixteen thousand people have moved to Connecticut just since March. Do we have any way of knowing what share of those sixteen thousand are here in Fairfield? And is there a way to estimate how many of those people have school age children? And it might be this June. It might not be until they start registering, but I wasn't sure if there was either moving truck data or postal service data around any of that.
That I'm not sure. I think that we would see it in the registrations would be the way that the school district would be able to capture that information. But it would be interesting to see if that influx of sixteen thousand actually impacted our enrollment. As of right now, we haven't seen that to be the case, but it is something at least across, definitely across the elementary school, monitoring the enrollment. So at this point, we haven't seen that to be the case.
All right. I can imagine if people are moving in the midst of a pandemic, registering their kids might not be top of mind until it gets a bit closer. And also people probably trying to figure out whether or not they're comfortable and all of that. So I just was wondering if there was a way to get a preliminary number before we get hypothetically a large influx right before the school year. But that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
All right, my name is Jennifer. I was thinking the same thing. I don't know if we can capture those registrations until the season. I know personally in my neighborhood and my friends, there have been, you know, wars and their houses, you know, not even on the market and it's being sold. And I know in my office at Public Health Nursing, we are seeing physicals coming in from New York. So we know that there is, we are getting a fair share of people moving into Connecticut. But we might not see those until, you know, if they have a closing in August. I don't think you'll see those registrations until late.
Mr. Cummings and Dr. Parrish, do you mind if I hop in quickly?
Go ahead.
I'm the executive director of personnel legal services. I did just want to note that anecdotally, this has all been on our radar. As Dr. Parrish noted, we don't have the hard numbers about enrollment, but anecdotally, this is not, this has been several months in the making. So especially in terms of elementary classrooms and enrollment, there is an understanding among our elementary administrators that enrollment could change very drastically in August, and we're prepared to have that conversation and do that work. So we've been, and there are sections that you look at when you look at the spreadsheet that are very close are the schools where we are having those conversations about contingency plans. If you do have to float a teacher because you don't fill, if you do end up filling a section that we weren't thinking was going to fill, how all of that will work? Because it will impact the scheduling across the elementary schools with our unified arts teachers. It's going, it is going to have a ripple effect, and we're, you know, anticipating that that work in the coming weeks.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, now we'll move on to Superintendent update. School reopening, Mr. Cummings, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. And before I go any further, I'd also like to welcome Dr. James Savichantik. Dr. Savichantik, excuse me, is our new Executive Director of Instruction Curriculum and Assessment, and he's joining us for the first time tonight as well. So we didn't give him a starring role tonight, but there'll be plenty of opportunities in future meetings for him to shine. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump in and try to cover the bases as much as possible in where we are with school reopening planning. Before I do that, though, I would like to go to an oldie but goodie and ask Mr. Papa George to give us an update on the fields, because they're still out there and they're still a problem. So, Mr. Papa George, would you be able to speak to the fields? Give us an update, please?
So unfortunately, it's not good news about the fields. DEP has put a stop to all of our plans to remediate the fields. They've asked us to reconsider and look at a global plan to handle all the schools and all the town fields at one as a single project and get the paperwork. It's just a matter of the different way of doing the paperwork. Have to kind of start from square one again and redo the planning. So the question mark has now become, when we start schooling the fall, will they be done? Or will we have to plan weekend and after hours and holiday work to get them done? Because speaking with Brian Cleary from the town, we are both still stuck on we will not do any work with students in the building. So we will keep the students safe, but at this point, it's not looking like they're going to be done before students return. Again, sorry, not good news.
I'm going to speak to them there for a second, Angela. We had kids, we had kids at home for so long, we could have done it then. But thank you so much for your efforts on this still. You have been our fearless leader in terms of these fields, and I appreciate, you know, all the time that you've put in and for keeping us informed. Ms. Jacobson, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Jen Jacobson. Can you tell us and the public just what the rationale for this change in procedure was that may end up to this delay?
Unfortunately, we do not have a rationale. I do not have a rationale. I can reach out to Brian Carey to see if he got any more clarification from them. But DEP is in the position where if they say, no, you're not doing it this way, we want a new plan, we kind of just have to go with a new plan. We don't have the ability to say, fight them back on it, especially now that we are actually in a plan by DEP and not just doing it as our own, as our own and looking for DEP weigh-in on our plans. Now they have to be approved by DEP.
We don't have to redo all of the remediation plans all over again, though, do we?
Not the ones that are already completed, but the new ones we will. It doesn't mean we have to go out and retest fields and everything else. It's just a matter of changing the way the paperwork reads and how it's going to be disposed of and how they're going to be handled is what it comes down to at the end of the day. They weren't happy with some of the information, so they want more of a global plan. So it's one type of plan for all sites as opposed to a different type of plan. Because again, we were looking at a residential standard for the schools, and they were probably looking at slightly above that for other areas. And now DEP is saying, we want one plan for everything.
Okay. I mean, I do think that the public may be interested, and I know that I'm interested, if we, if there is a rationale of what that was that may cause this delay, it might be helpful just for everyone to understand why that was.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Brian Carey. He's been the party person for DEP and see if he has any other information at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Hi, Jessica Gerber. I'm sorry, and if you can't think of everything or if I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Papa George. Is there any way, because it's been a while, would you be able to just run through the sites where students would be, will be impacted, assuming people are back in school in September?
So off the top of my head, and I apologize, I don't have the list in front of me, but Osborne Hill, the front parking lot area, and the ball field in the back are the big ones. So really, the biggest concern we have right now is Mill Hill, because we have to, at this point, we're going to have to relocate all the contaminated soils in order for construction to come up and put their laydown site in place. So that's, that's what we're looking at now, and we're going to have to try to work with DEP to get some kind of guidance and some kind of clearance so that we can maybe just move and stockpile the material until it's ready to be shipped out. But until we can move that walkway, we can't even do our laydown area for construction. So that may end up laying construction as well. So we're really looking at Mill Hill right now. There was, I don't remember if we completed Ward or not. Again, I apologize, I don't have the list in front of me of sites.
McKinley. We have McKinley though.
Yeah, McKinley was the other one that was high on the list.
Okay. And then just in terms of Mill Hill, has this, when did you get this information about the changes?
Sal and myself spoke with the building committee chairman about a week ago and explained what was going on with that. And that's why we're working with.
And Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he was made aware of it, so he knows that we're working with DEP to get some type of guidance so that we can continue moving forwards.
Okay, because I know they did have a meeting and they have kind of a timeline in terms of starting things out because they had the initial bids and everything, so I just wasn't sure. I wanted to make sure that they were in the loop on that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Maxine Canelli?
Yeah, Mrs. Gerber asked my question, but to expand on that, could you please, I mean, could you please get us that list? Because I do think it's important that the public is aware of this. You know, even better would be if you could maybe partner with Mr. Carey so that it, Cleary, so that this was, Carey, whoever's going to have the list for fields, so that townwide, all affected fields are known. Because, and then specifically, you also mentioned Ward, and yet as of July sixth, to my understanding, coaches were allowed to be outdoors doing conditioning with athletes. So are there areas where they could possibly have been working out and they're not supposed to be there? So.
No, Ward, Ward is completed. I'm sorry, Ward was on the completed list.
Okay.
Not an issue. It was McKinley I was thinking of, not Ward.
Okay.
I was in the right, I was on the right street, just up a little bit.
All right, so but then, then just a simple question. If you could please put together that completed list, I think it's good for us to know and good for the public to hear.
When I get that list, Mr. Papa George, you send me that list. I can get a communication out to the community again.
Okay.
Just to give them an update, because we, again, we just, I've just, we just found this information out today. The other piece I'd add to this, just as I'm thinking about it, there was also issues with the Tomlinson parking lot, but that is already covered. So that was the fourth school on the list, I believe.
I believe it, correct.
Okay, so and then actually, if I could refine my request, the ones that, I think it would help for the public to hear both. These are the places that were completed. These are the ones that will not be done by school. This way, everything is covered. And if anybody has a, well, wait a minute, what about this school? It should be captured on one of those two lists.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
And just again, this was driven just by the work that was being done by DEP when they came in to, I know that they were at the fill pile, and it's just sort of a domino effect from that work that was being done to collectively look at the town and the fields together again.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Papa George? Okay, seeing none. Mike, back to you.
All right.
Sorry.
I'm going to talk about, wait, are you still talking?
Ms. Picko had her hand up. I don't know.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Tricia. You know, I have to move my little screen here of my participants. Ms. Picko.
Thanks, Angela, for letting her know I had a question. If we could, Mr. Cummings, in the communication, there's going to be a lot of new families at these schools, especially since we're talking about so many people moving in. Maybe explain, I know you can't project when it's going to actually be remediated, but explain why it's being remediated. People may not understand, like, for instance, McKinley, what part of McKinley specifically? You don't want a new family coming to the school not understanding, you know, it's just one patch or it's not, you know? If we could just be a little transparent about that in our communication.
Well, agreed. We have been, and we continue on our website still, are all the maps and all the test results. I mean, none of that has been taken down, and we can definitely reference families back to that information, you know, for backstory as it exists.
Anything else, Ms. Picko? Thank you. That was a good point. There are new families moving in. They may not necessarily know, you know, the work that was done and the issues from the beginning of the last school year. Anybody else? If you have your hand up and I don't see you, please just say, you know, call me out. Thank you, Mr. Papa George, for looking after Ms. Picko, though. Okay, back to you, Mr. Cummings.
Okay, so I'm going to break this update on the reopening into two pieces. I'm going to give you a sense in its coherence. I'm gonna give you a sense, and as coherently as possible, try to walk through the current work that is going on in the district to get us ready. And then, the second part of my presentation tonight will be to go through that slide deck that essentially gives you some sense of the parent and staff surveys that we've received, that we are now concluded. There'll be some cross-referencing between these two parts of the conversation tonight, but I think that that's probably best than rather than try to do both at once. So, so let me just kind of go on a higher view and then start to bring it down. As you're aware at this point, the state has asked us to prepare essentially for three scenarios. The three scenarios are that we, and the current, the current expectation, I should add as well, is that students return to school in September, and they are in school with the appropriate social distancing mask and all of the requirements that, and I'll talk about those, that more specifically in a second. So that's the first requirement. At the same time in that requirement, or that part of the plan, there is an understanding that for both health reasons and due to student's parent selection, parent opting out, they can choose a distance learning option. So, at its base, what we're preparing for is, I don't wanna, you know, overextend this a little bit, but we're essentially preparing for two, two school systems in the, in the fall. One where students are in place, and one where students are home and accessing school through distance learning. So we've got the in-place, the brick and mortar scenario, we've got the distance learning scenario, and then the third scenario that kind of falls in the middle of that is some type of hybrid scenario. And that would involve a group of students coming in on one, on a couple days a week, I shouldn't even say that. Some students coming in on some days of the week, and other students coming in on alternate days of the week. And that has different possibilities, you know, you see school systems looking at every other day, you still get school systems that are doing Monday, Tuesday cohort, and then a Wednesday, excuse me, a Thursday, Friday cohort, and school being closed on Wednesday, and everybody's in distance learning on Wednesday. There's a number of ways this plays out, but the idea of essentially reducing the number of students in school. Now, as you'll see in the scenario, or, excuse me, as you'll see in the survey, we could wind up in that situation in some places where it's only a certain amount of kids are in school at any given point, just because of parent selection to decide to stay in the distance learning. So, they, where we like to be in the school year with a very neat chessboard and everybody in their place, this is going to be far, this is gonna look like a three-year-old's bedroom after a full night of partying. I mean, it's just gonna be a mess. We're not gonna see people in their normal, typical places when we begin the year, and we're gonna have to sort all this mess out. And we're gonna do a great job. I don't want anybody to be afraid of that far. We're gonna do a wonderful job, but it, this is kind of like, this is what it's gonna look like. And then, I wanna add too, that there's, clearly, we're, we're working in a shifting situation. So, just as I was saying earlier tonight, just in the paper today, you will read that the governor last night made a comment that about four weeks from now, the state will make a decision on what this, how school's ultimately gonna look. So, when we were given the reopening plan, we were told, it's gonna be back at school. Understandably, that, that language has now shifted, that now, four weeks later, we'll have a better sense of what that looks like. And the other part of that was, of course, the governors and, or, excuse me, the State Board of Education's decision today to provide three more days at the beginning of the school year for staff and student training, and which I know we'll, we'll be talking about perhaps tonight and certainly at a conference meeting, is that it might, that would impact this adopted school calendar. So, part of our daily work is to keep an eye on the messages that come from the State Department and to keep an eye on the news media. So, we are, we are, we are pushing, again, that all students are the expectation, that all students would be back at school come the first day of school. We are in process, in central office primarily at this point, of two major groups of work happening. Mr. Papa George is working with Ms. Mitchell from the Health Department, and they are working with others in our, in the school system, including Lieutenant Wyah, to develop understandings and expectations and logistics around the actual return to school. So think about all the things that have to go into place around that. And there's, there's really four primary areas in this that they're addressing. One is the issues of hand washing, a second is the issue of masks, third is the issue of social distancing, and fourth would be this issue of cohorts. And I'm gonna talk further about cohorts in a second. But this idea of how, what are the logistics? How do we bring students into school safely? How do we, how do we, how do we provide lunch? Are students gonna go off to lunch? Are some students gonna go into the cafeteria? Are other students gonna eat in the classroom? How are we gonna address issues around food allergies? How are we gonna issue when students go to the bathroom to make sure that there's only one student in the bathroom at a time? How are students gonna pass in the hall? If you think about an elementary classroom, let's talk about elementary for a second here. If you think about the steam teacher, the art teacher, the music teacher, the teacher, are teachers gonna travel to the students rather than the students traveling to the teacher? And what are the ramifications of that? How does that impact curriculum? How does that impact program and instruction? Think about a elementary classroom and social distancing. The expectation from the state is, is, first of all, that everybody's gonna be wearing a mask. We gotta be really clear about that. That is, it's been very made, that has been made clear to us, that unless somebody has a note from a doctor, they're gonna be expected to wear a mask. And that will allow for social distancing spacing of less than the six feet. So, Mr. Papa George is working with his staff on going through elementary classrooms. One, changing the tables that exist in most of our elementary classrooms, pulling desks out of storage and using the old traditional classroom desk for students. Two, removing the extraneous furniture, I shouldn't actually call it extraneous, it's important furniture, and there are bookshelves and things like that. But there's really not gonna be space in our elementary classrooms for all that furniture when we have to maintain as much social distancing as possible. So, the, the bookshelves, bean bags, the area rug, because students will not be able to assemble together on the rugs, all these things will gonna have to be come out of the classroom as much as possible. And we're talking right now about the idea that teachers would have a single bookshelf which would be behind their desk. So there's a number of, of, you know, the idea of students sharing glue sticks and pencils and those things, you know, when you go into an elementary classroom, you see those tatties on the, on the tables, that won't be gone. Teachers, students will not have to have their own labeled supply of materials. So, I think about the issues around book bins, right? There's all kinds of ramifications of how this is gonna play out into a classroom. Mr. Papa George and I were saying that it's gonna look more like the classroom of our youth, and I'll say my youth, you know, where everything, we actually read by candlelight. But that, that's gonna be part of what we're gonna be dealing with, it's gonna be really a throwback situation. There's a number of ways, and I'm sure your questions will have me expand on this, because I could go on for a long time about how elementary particularly is gonna be impacted by this. But these are all pieces that we're looking at. Let me take a sidestep here before I talk about middle and high, actually, let me talk about cohorts for a second, and then talk about buses. So the idea of a cohort essentially is that we're being asked to reduce the amount of cohorts that a student is in. So, in an elementary class, in an elementary school, the cohort is the class of students. You know, the third grade class where your son or daughter is assigned. If your son or daughter also takes the bus, that would be a second cohort that they'd be involved with. And they really would be, for a large part, limited to those two cohorts. Because again, they travel, you know, for, by and large, as a, as a, as a group. If they were in a, let's say, a fifth grade class, how music lessons, how orchestra lessons might be provided, they should say band or orchestra lessons are provided, that starts to raise the issue of a third cohort. Because students are often grouped by instrument across different grade levels. So that's something we're gonna have to look at, how we're gonna approach that. But, but in elementary, you have a relatively limited amount of cohorts. Let me, while I talk about buses, let me just take a quick side to busing. The, the state plan provides three levels of busing. The expectation, again, is that we're going to start the year with students in place, so by that, and at low risk. Low risk means essentially that anybody who should be on that bus, who can get on that bus, would be on that bus. That students should be wearing masks on the bus, but it isn't that, that summer school program or plan that you, you saw and that Mr. McQuesy talked about a last meeting or a couple of minutes ago, where we had about eight students on a full, eight, 10, 11 students on a full-sized bus with a bus monitor. The state is not talking about that now. Now, again, if the health numbers increase, we'd have to reduce the amount of students on a bus by halving it, or then eventually going to that, where it's almost like a quarter of the students, or a fifth of the students would be allowed to be on the bus. And that, again, would be determined by the, the health data. Alright, let me go, let me go back to, to the middle school and high school. The idea of a cohort becomes far, far more, you got a question?
No, I was just going to just remind the board, in terms of the health data, as we talk about it, the State Department of Health has not issued the guidance on that yet. So I think it's important to remember, as we talk from going from low, medium to high, and what might prompt that, the health data would prompt that, but we don't know what the trigger number will be yet.
Right.
So which makes, which makes the job even more difficult before us. Sorry.
We learned when we went into social distancing back in, you know, as we went into distance learning back in March, that number accelerated very quickly, you know, at that particular time. So, the cohort in the middle school and the high school is far more problematic, and it's the nature of the middle school and high school program. I mean, there's some things in middle school you can do in elementary that we have to think about, right? How, for example, students on team, how many of those, those students can remain on team in, in, say, social studies, travel to science, travel to English class together? Where you start to see the issue come apart is, we have a differentiated math program in the middle schools, we have an accelerated math program in the middle school. So, there are gonna be students who are gonna cross teams to take math classes. We have students who get remedial support in math, and they're gonna cross teams to get that support. They get that support in reading, they get EL support. Our music program offers a variety of options, our world language program offers a variety of options. So, even when they go off to Family and Consumer Science or Tech Ed, there are options here, and we can try to work within a cohort as much as possible, but the very nature of our middle school program makes that very difficult. And it essentially becomes impossible at the high school. When, particularly at the upper grades, students are taking singleton classes, they may have a common English or math together, but then they're gonna be breaking up by their areas of interest. And, and just the size of our high school makes the cohort far difficult. There's some, there's some side issues to this as well, the size of the, you know, well, the success of our music programs. There's great numbers of students in the choral and band programs, the orchestra programs. How do we deliver instruction for those students in school, also for those students out of school, so that we're maintaining as much social distance as possible, but still delivering the curricular program? So those are a lot of the logistical issues that we're trying to address right now. And before I talk about instruction and curriculum, maybe if I, if I pause, have a drink and see if there's any questions that people have.
Any questions for Mr. Cummings? Ms. Maxicelli?
Just one quick question. In that hybrid model, you mentioned the idea of Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, days A, B, whatever those options are. And I don't know if this is a contract issue, but has there been discussion of altering the school hours?
There's, well, how do you, do you mean, do you mean shortening the day somewhat, or?
Well, I, I mean, I suppose that, but are also extending it out so that when the students are coming into the building has been significantly changed.
Yeah. Well, you're right, it would be a contract issue. I think one of the things that I'm seeing chatter online among the superintendents is the idea of shortening the day a bit, and trying to think about how we might, particularly on arrival, safely take on all those students who are coming in, and at the same time, you know, provide teachers their release time at that point so that it doesn't interfere with the other part of the day. I mean, these are, probably not making much sense around that, but that's part of the issue that they're trying to look at, because the logistics of arrival and dismissal are going to naturally extend the day, and they're gonna impact bus runs and other issues that we gotta be mindful of, you know, other impacts on parental time.
Okay, but so, all of any plan you're looking at, they're all somehow operating within the parameters of what we consider to be the current school day?
Somewhat within that, yes, yes. Those are kind of the beginnings and the end. One of the things that we have to look at, so, I'll play out a possibility for you. You know, one of the things that we're gonna look at, and you'll see in the slides, is this issue of transportation. And we ask parents if they'd be willing to provide transportation for their, for their students rather than the students who take the bus. So when you look at that information, and we, we had nothing but a preliminary conversation with the emergency operations group last Friday. If you think about Uncle Road from Tomlinson up to Fairfield Lolo, what the impact is gonna be if we, we say, if parents say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drive my, my child now? What that's gonna do to that road at that time? And do we have to think about alternating some start and end times of schools, specific schools, to address, you know, traffic issues in, in town? So, do Tomlinson and Rogers Lolo start and end at the same time? You know, that's just something we're gonna have to start to work on with the police once our draft is finalized in a week and begin to now take it clear to town bodies for consideration. So that, Ms. Maxicelli, may be something that, you know, it certainly is still to be determined. And then, once we know what the logistics are even for arrival and dismissal, how might we have to address some of those issues? Jennings and Fairfield Woods presents another one.
Right.
You know, so.
Okay, and then, just one other quick question now before you move on, is that, are we tackling the issue of renting out our buildings?
Of what, that?
Renting out our bill, I mean, the, the building rentals, the space rentals, you know, to non-school groups after school hours, in terms of all the cleaning that is being asked to be done? Are we changing that policy? Because again, there could be groups, there could be organizations that are counting on school space, and we might not want to offer that anymore, or at least make additional fees, even if they're working during, you know, the immediate after school, for the additional cleaning that will be required if we do rent out. I didn't know if that was being discussed.
It, it absolutely is being discussed. I mean, those, those childcare providers, for example, our call, I wonder what ours answer is, and we've not yet given them an answer. I think, Mr. Papa George, I mean, we do have concerns, kind of circles back in the conversation we had about summer programs, right? We have concerns about, while the supply of PPE and cleaning supplies has improved, will continue to be better, given the nature of the virus across the country at this point? Are we still gonna be able to get those supplies on a steady basis? So, those are all things that are gonna impact the decision, because we've gotta obviously put our instructional program first and our kids first. I know that there's been conversations, or at least just the beginning of conversations around the use of the building for basketball programs and other activities that happen more at night. And I think, for a large part, we're gonna have to say no to those right now, just given the complexities of cleaning. I mean, we're having conversations about altering our societal schedules, so that we have, you know, currently right now, in an elementary school, you have one person during the day. One person's not gonna be able to handle the amount of cleaning that has to happen in between classes, bathrooms, cafeterias, the frequency of the cleaning, and the intensity of that cleaning. And so do we have to start to modify our, our schedules for those staff as well? So, I, I think that that's an answer still to come, but, you know, it's gonna, we have to prioritize the needs of the building, obviously, and the instructional day first.
Thank you.
Ms. Liefer?
Hey, Jennifer Liefer, I have a related question. Has any consideration been given to, rather than doing A, B days, doing on, off weeks? And, and whether or not that could help with the depth of cleaning that's required between each group of kids? So if we have A week, B week, you know that the A week kids are gonna have less potential virus intermingling on the surfaces and whatnot, the buses, all of those things. If they're, they're in the building together for a full week, and then say, Sunday night, instead of a Friday, we do a mass sanitation, rather than having to do that every, every day? And I, I can't yet wrap my mind around whether or not that- that would be helpful or worth for families to try to navigate, but I just throw it out there as another possible scenario and wonder if you guys have given that any thought?
Yeah, and I will tell you that we're looking at a lot of the situations and the scenarios that are just developing. You know, I just saw when Angela sent me the other day one from Greenville Schools in South Carolina. That was really interesting and very well done. You know, so these are things that we're all looking at. Our priority right now is, you know, get the plan for reopening done. Get the plan for brick and mortar done. We're working, and I'll talk in a bit about what we're doing to work on improving distance learning. But next week, the executive directors are essentially going to sit in the boardroom and develop the hybrid model to go with it as well. And I want to stress, because I haven't stressed enough already, what's going to come forward next Friday and probably the Monday after that is a draft. It is not yet a final plan because we will not have time to truly vet it with everybody before next Friday, given the timeline that the state is expecting. We're going to try to vet it. We don't want to... We want to vet it with the administrators, at the very least, to get some impact and feedback. But we're going to then put it out to the community for feedback, and that plan will continue to be revised through August. So those are options we can look at. And I think your... The great concern, as you identified with the hybrid plan, is the childcare issue. And working with families who have students at different levels and how do we get them, you know, or just how do we address that all their kids are in school together at once, not on different times? It's a puzzle.
Definitely. And, Ms. Tally, you can tell me whether or not I should table this next one, but the cohorting, as soon as you start thinking about minimizing cohorting and then you think about things like our students with allergies and whether or not we would need to have students with allergies eating in a separate space than their general classroom, well, that introduces another cohort. And I think you touched on it very briefly, before and after care, there are more cohorts. Have you guys thought through... We can maybe put aside before and after care, but even allergy?
Yes, we're working on that. The question of, you know, Mr. Papa George and I were speaking today. I mean, if, you know, if the students with allergies go to the cafeteria and they bring a friend, you know, not sitting along, but if we put them in the cafeteria, but then they come back into the classroom and somebody in the class... If the rest of the class is eating in the classroom and somebody brought in, you know, a peanut butter sandwich, well, now you've got another problem. So are we going to have to, you know, have conversations about what that does for our food allergy policy and how that's going to address those types of issues? So these... I will tell you that every question you ask, you get multiple other questions. And you can have these frustratingly endless conversations that ultimately end in you being discouraged because all you're doing is asking questions and struggling to come up with answers. Again, I don't want anybody to think we don't have the answers. We're working on answers. We're relying on, you know, districts are talking to each other. We're stealing from each other's plans. But there's a great complexity to this that, you know, and it's all worth it if we can get the kids back because everybody wants the kids back. So this is why we're doing it, because there's a great benefit to getting us back together.
Before I move on for questions, I just want to comment that, for the public, just in case they're not aware, we are required to submit a plan to the state by the 24th. The state will not be approving the plan. And I'm sure many board members and staff members have been listening to webinars galore. Some of the guidance that I have received and heard is submit your plan and then keep revising. Submit another plan, keep revising, and commit... You know, submit another plan. Given that so much of the decision-making is going to be driven by the health data, and we don't have all that information right now, for the public's sake, I know everyone has been very patient, and this is very stressful for everyone. But unfortunately, we're going to have to wait a little for the final plan. And even as we saw back in March, it could change the next day. Just kind of a little reality check there. For that, Ms. Picco? With that, yours.
Thank you. So my question, and it may be... There are a lot of families that ask about what not to keep their children to do distance learning. Some people have already made up their minds. How is it going to be used in our planning? Is there a cost or a timeline where you would like parents to volunteer that information? For instance, say, my child goes in on day three, she gets a fever. Like, can I then, on day three, to keep her for distance learning for the remainder of, you know, the first half of the year or something? Is there going to be some kind of protocol, I guess, or a date that you need to know by?
We're not going to put out a survey after the plan is released. I mean, timed with the plan released. And we're going to ask parents before they... This is going to be a very specific survey. This is going to be a survey, you know, the survey I'm going to share data on did not collect student names, for example, right? The survey that we're going to send out is going to ask parents to log into the campus to essentially provide their student ID number and answer specifically questions on each of their children who are in the Fairfield Public Schools. And it's going to ask them to commit to whether they're going to come back to school or not come back to school remaining distance learning. Now, you'll see in the survey data that a lot of what those parents are waiting to see, one is our plan and two is the rate of COVID transmission in the state of Connecticut. So again, that there's going to be movement within this. But at some point, we have to draw the line and say, you know, we have to commit because we have to, to Ms. Dacey's earlier point, to see, we have to start assigning teachers who are in distance learning to students in distance learning and reverse. Now, having said that, you know, the plot says that if a student shows up, a student starts in distance learning and is in distance learning for three and a half weeks and on the following day says, "I'm going back to school," they show up, we have to take them in. One of the things that the commissioner has been asked to consider is the timing of that. If there's a way that districts can kind of put windows of transition to this. Because, you know, what we... First of all, we don't want kids in and out on alternate days. It's not going to be good for anybody. But secondly, we just don't... We can't have... Schools have to anticipate that when students are coming back and then make provisions for those students returning. Because now it's a matter of adding another desk to the class and re-measuring the distance between desks. There's all kinds of other things that start to happen when a student reappears in the school. You know, and if we do assign, like, if we assign a certain group of students to distance learning and then that cohort of students begins to shrink down and they start returning back to the school, then we have to shift the teacher back. So there's all kinds of dominoes falling with every movement. And so one of the questions that's come up, and the commissioner has got to give us, you know, he said he'd get back to us, but this idea of these windows where students could kind of enter and exit out of the two, transition in and out of the two states. Did I answer your question, Ms. Picco?
Yes, I just have one more that's kind of a follow-up. So, for instance, and I... Don't quote me, I don't know. But if my child has a fever, I think they're not allowed to return to school for 48 hours. Mrs. Rattelli might know that. But if a child starts to show symptoms, has a fever, is there going to be some kind of protocol how many days they have to be out or they have to get tested or...
That's expected, part of the plan. And right now, when students go out, they're going to need a doctor to know, clearing them that whatever the reason was that they displayed these symptoms, it was not COVID-19. So they're going to need a clear bill of health before they can come back in.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson. Couple of questions. I know in the state plan, Mr. Cummings, that there were several additional pieces of guidance that were mentioned within that document that were going to be forthcoming. Have you received any of those? Or are we still waiting? There's about six of them? Or are you still waiting for those? Because I would think that those additional pieces of guidance would be necessary to have in order for us to be able to put in our plan? Or is that not the case?
I don't remember offhand what they are, Ms. Jacobson. I remember a couple, but I don't remember all of them. And the ones I'm thinking of, we have not yet received, Ms. Rattelli mentioned earlier, this kind of health data that would denote the level of you had to respond to. We've not received that, for example. So we're still waiting on pieces of information.
Was updated guidance for special education put forward? I think that was another one. Yes, special ed was one. Chorus, because you had mentioned chorus, thinking about chorus.
Chorus was not put forward.
The one that I'm particularly interested in also, I'm interested in all of them, obviously, but one is the inter-district transportation. That was a forthcoming piece of information on how, for like magnet programs, coming out and going in. So I think that that's going to be food for thought for us at some point in how that gets handled. So I was just curious if we had received those or have they told you when you can expect all of these, considering they want you to turn in a plan in 10 days?
You'd be surprised to hear me say, "No, they haven't told us that." I'm going to check to Mr. Mancuti, though, because I don't know... We had a commissioner phone call. Hold on, let me wait. Give me a second. We had a commissioner phone call, and I know the director of Special Education for the state was on that call, but I think he was saying it's still on hold, right?
I have not seen anything, and I've had several conversations with other colleagues in other districts about that.
So we're on hold for that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And going back to previous comment by Mrs. Max and Canelli on the building rentals, when you said we were thinking about possibly not doing that, does that include parks and rec programs?
Parks and rec, yes, it does. And Parks and Rec is going to have to make some of its own determinations around this. But one of the issues that we, going back kind of to the custodial issue, if we reverse our ratio, rather than one person in the day and two at night, if we go to two in the day and one at night, it's going to become far more difficult to clean any of those common spaces to get the building ready for the next day. So this is something we have to consider.
Okay, yeah, no, just wanted to clarify that. And then this is not something for you to answer right now, but if we did go to the concept that Mrs. Max and Canelli had mentioned about pooling students from different schools, and this is not something that I'm looking for you to, you know, be able to clarify right now, but the October 1 count determines a lot of things in our state.
Yes.
Interning, you know, school funding and just a lot of things. So for in the future, and maybe this is to Mrs. Dacey, how the mixing of those counts, Title I, bilingual education program, is by building. So there's a lot of things that go to that October 1 count. And so I know that I, at some point, would like to know, depending on our plan, if we're doing that, how we're going to navigate accountability, how we're going to navigate funding, all of those different kinds of programs. Because I know we don't want to lose the things that we have because of populations. So that's just something in the back of my mind if we think about and how important and critical. And I'm almost thinking that, you know, if we're looking for help from the state, almost like there should be a reconciliation count at a certain point of year because, as you mentioned, people can come back in at certain points, and that could be different numbers, but we're not accounting for them in the beginning. So that's a whole separate, complex conversation, but it's been critically important to our district and I would imagine all districts around that October 1 count.
It's a very good point. Yes, you're absolutely right.
Mr. Peterson?
I have a few questions. Jeff Peterson, thank you. I have a few questions, but Chair, I wonder, is the more of Mr. Cummings' presentation, or are we interrupting? You said you were taking a drink to break, and I don't know whether to save questions for later or ask them now.
I'm going to...
Well, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to the superintendent. He knows his presentation or his update better than I do. Mike, if you want to move on, we can. If this is pertinent to what year this lenient questioning is pertinent to what we're talking about now, I'm happy to keep it going.
Yeah, I'm going to talk next about, just give a quicker update on the curriculum and instructional work that's happening these last couple of weeks and then go into the survey data. So, Mr. Peterson, if they're related to logistics, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Yeah, yes, well, yes and no. So one thing that I actually was interested in talking to Mr. Papa George about, a lot of the reading that I've been doing about bringing kids back has to do with... A lot of recommendations have to do with ventilation. I'm seeing a lot of recommendations. Keep windows open, keep doors open, keep airflow. And I know that we have a, you know, school system that has air conditioning in some buildings, some buildings that don't. And, you know, obviously, safety protocols that mandate doors remain closed. I'm kind of wondering how that's all going to fit into the plan and whether or not there is any repair work or kind of maintenance-related ventilation that we may want to move up in scale in order to not have a, you know, building mechanically needs a fresh air go down at a point where we're having people think about it.
Mr. Papa George?
So to try to answer some of that, we've been working with a company, Benzell Engineering. They've done a lot of the sign-off on our buildings for our construction for HVAC. They go in and they balance, make sure we're up to code on what we need to be. So we're working with them on a proposal to come in and evaluate the 16 sites that we have to look at the filters that we're using. You know, the, just to backtrack a little, the state guidelines that came out said, "Open your fresh air dampers 100% and turn off your economizers." So that's a short-term solution. Now, we're going to get all this fresh air into the buildings. However, we took the approach to look at it more of a scientific look because if we open our dampers 100% on our buildings and we have a coil that's not designed open our dampers 100% on our buildings, and we have a coil that's not designed to handle 100% humidity air coming in, we're bringing moisture, mold, air quality issues into that building. So we have to balance what we're gonna do with what they're recommending, and we don't want to be the ones that say, you know what, we're not opening them 100%, we're only opening them 80%. That's why we're, we've reached out to Benzelm, because they have the engineering background and the experience with our specific buildings to come in and look at them and look at, how much can our coils handle if we open them? Maybe they run at 60% normal, and we can get away with opening them 80% without creating other issues in the building. Um, so that's one thing we're looking at. We're looking at filters in the building, that's another thing. Um, we are in the process this summer of upgrading five schools with, uh, control upgrades, so I don't think we're really at that point where we're concerned about any systems that might go down. I mean, we're, we always have surprises, but at the end of the school year, we did replace a bunch of the smaller rooftop units as well. So we'll, we'll be looking, I think, in a very good shape. I think the engineering report will be key for making that all happen. But on the other hand, just so you, like you mentioned, there are schools that don't have air conditioning in them, and the reports are saying we can't put classroom fans in there. Like, last summer, we ran around and we bought hundreds of classroom fans and we put them in these rooms, and now we're in the process of pulling them out, because we don't want to circulate the air that's in the classroom now. We want the fresh air in there. So again, working with Lieutenant Wyatt on my team, we're looking at windows and what can be opened safely and what's allowed and what we shouldn't allow to be open. So we are looking at all of that as an indoor air quality issue for all the schools.
Great, that's, that's very helpful. That is just, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that it's a comprehensive answer and it's something that's already being considered, uh, really tricky, though. Um, I, I don't, I'll leave that for now. I have some more of that type of question. The other major category of question I have for, for Mr. Cunningham, is the state guidance seems to have a lot of responsibilities for a COVID coordinator, um, you know, and, and also they're talking about, you know, determining, you know, one or two people in each school building to be service trainers. I'm wondering if this is going to ultimately necessitate a full-time position. Um, there's, there's so much to coordinate and so much, uh, reporting that it looks like we need to do. Has that, has that been thought about at all? Is that something that, first, do you think we can handle it with current staff?
Uh, um, our current, our COVID coordinator right now is Mr. Papa George. But I, I do understand what you're saying. I think that that's a concern we have, particularly, um, given the potential length of this issue as well as the shifting back and forth of resources. And I've spoken to Mr. Papa George about the fact that, uh, it's just something we're gonna have to monitor and possibly get him some support, whether it's in that area or assuming some of his support in his more traditional responsibilities.
All right, well, thanks. We'll see you after you go home.
Ms. Lieber?
Hi, Jennifer Lieber. I have a follow-up question about the fans. I had read the guidance to say that they did recommend fans, but only circulating air out of classrooms. So, and there likely are buildings where we don't have the ability to open windows enough to necessarily circulate air out of a window. Uh, I would think that probably varies facility to facility. But I thought that it had also recommended, um, keeping doors open as long as, as that can be saved, and putting fans there to circulate the air out of classrooms. Did I misread that?
So, no, they, they are recommending circulating air out of classrooms, but not into like a hallway setting. They're looking for like a window-type fan, which our buildings are not really suited to do that. So a big pedestal fan sitting in a doorway and blowing the air or sucking the air out into the hallway is just moving confined air from one room into the entire building. So they'd be looking more for flowing out of a window, which our big pedestal fans would not be able to handle at that, at this point anyways.
Ah, I see. Thank you for that clarification. And, and this might not be the right time for this question or not, but since we're talking about AC and air quality, I know that so many families are really worried about sending their kids, especially young kids, uh, maybe that's just because those are more of the families I know, back to school with masks, with, with, um, limited access to, to means of mechanical fresh air or AC. And what are you guys thinking for, for dealing with that? And if masks are gonna be a whole separate section later, I'm happy to table that question.
No, we can address masks. I mean, the state is, you know, this question's been posed to the commissioner several times, to, to the commissioner of public health. There's, there is no flexibility there. Masks are gonna be required. Uh, I think there's some conversation about face shields as opposed to masks. Um, but given, given the fact that, um, the stick with social distancing is, is not very possible, um, in schools, the, the, the plan is a mask. And the commissioner's been clear that, um, to not be able to wear a mask is going to require, um, you know, a letter from a doctor stating the reason why. Uh, that's, that's been the communication, and so far, they, they've been very strong on that.
Can I ask what, what you guys are thinking in terms of mask breaks and increased time outside? Are, I was assuming, and I shouldn't do that, that kids would not be asked to wear masks during outdoor recess? Is that true?
Uh, I think, again, it depends on what they're doing. Uh, you know, we, we, we talked again today about the idea of, you know, morning mask break and an afternoon mask break, and there's this guidance around, you know, take the kids around the school, um, y- you know, and so they can walk socially distanced apart without the mask for X number of minutes. Um, you know, these are things, there's another thing that's gonna have to be scheduled at the school. Um, you know, a, a potential relation to this is the idea of Mr. Papa George is talking about the idea of, at the middle school and high school, the, the rental of tents in order to expand the cafeteria space out, to the outside, so that might be an opportunity. Of course, this is a, a nicer weather solution. Um, you know, and we're gonna have, you know, depending again on when we're in and out of school and what the weather's like, what time of year it is, we're gonna have to look at alternatives to that. So, um, these are just things that we're gonna have to begin to work with the building administrators on. And, and I want to be, um, I want to make sure that I say this here now. What we can do in central office is start to put together a plan and, and, you know, know what the state guidance is and answer to that. But so much of this is gonna be refined by what our principals and our teachers, um, bring forward, because they're, they're obviously live in the building, they know the building movements, and there's gonna be some building vari- variability depending on traffic patterns and, you know, uh, the number of floors and all these other types of issues that go into play. That's gonna be part of the work that happens after the 24th.
I'm, I'm gonna just state the obvious, that, um, that our facilities provide a, a significant inequity for, for our kids. And I think the, the masks really highlight what, what I think probably as a community have always known, as we've worked through our waterfall, but this is, this is a real challenge for, for a number of our, our families and teachers and staff. Um, absolutely. I'll, I'll table-
Sure.
Oh, a last question. Are there gonna be any extra sort of, um, protocols built in for like mental health checks for, for kids and staff in this new climate, especially I would think as kids are, and staff are transitioning into new routines? And, and eventually, people are likely to get acclimated to this new normal, but in the beginning could be bumpy, to say the least?
Um, yeah, like, thank you, that's a great question. And Mr. McCutty, do you want to-
Yeah, if I could speak into that, yeah. There is a required, um, portion of that, um, the state template that talks about social emotional learning. We are looking at a universal screener that we just reviewed at our subcommittee meeting today. We're gonna finalize the plan on Thursday that is related to trauma that students could have experienced or families could have experienced during this pandemic. We are talking about a lot of social emotional learning, um, initiatives to implement to try to reengage students and families due to this, you know, the long absence from school.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that, because, um, I think it's great for the public to hear and, and know that you guys are all thinking through all of these, these aspects. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, um, why don't we move along? Mr. Cunningham?
Okay. So just real quick, and then I'll go to the slides. Um, teachers and administrators met last week and worked on the instructional models. We broke into four groups, pre-K 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 10. Uh, we had a tremendous, um, group of teachers, a really thoughtful, uh, group of teachers, and I have great appreciation for the work they did. Um, they are working on the instructional model. Uh, they, they, this week, um, teams are meeting in curricular areas, most of the curricular areas are meeting this week to, um, really prioritize the curriculum, start to think about, um, given the, the expectations of the curriculum, how might we approach some of this learning if we are in distance learning, if we're in some type of hybrid model? Or if, for example, um, you know, students are, the art room is coming to the students rather than students going to the art room. So those are things that teachers are working on this week. We're gonna make headway on that, and I want to be really clear. We are not gonna, we told the teachers essentially to prepare for the beginning of the year. If we're fortunate and we get through the middle of the year, the beginning of the year, and we're in school and we're able to handle a lot of these things, that's great. But if we suddenly find ourselves facing a long-term closure again, say in December, January, we're gonna have to revisit that work and update it, um, because it's really time-bound. Um, and then the instructional group that met last week is gonna be returning on, on Monday, the 20th, and finalizing to a large degree those instructional plans, starting to build some logistics. We want to update the plans that were posted on the district website last, middle of my, last March. Um, we're working on a template to do that, so that there's some commonality around that. But we've looked at the, um, staff and the parent surveys, excuse me, on distance learning that took place in June, and we're noting the issues that teach, that parents raised around things like communication, uh, things around the use of the Google Classroom, different issues around that, and the instructional plans are going to attempt to address those parent concerns. So that's, uh, that's a short answer, shortest possible answer on that work that's happening. Uh, and again, that will be, continue to be revised through the summer as we, as we learn more. So I don't know if there's any questions on that before I turn to the slides.
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Um, thank you. Uh, so, two topics. First, we'd heard a lot all the spring about, and I know this was difficult to do, um, of gathering information on where there are deficits of having met the curriculum. Um, I put that especially on content, um, you know, and, and that's across all subjects. All of them have, you know, very important measures that, you know, for vertical alignment, the next year is counting on having been accomplished. So where are we in terms of putting together the data on that and then the plans to address not only whole class deficits, but then the individual deficits? Um, so let me just start with that.
Well, we don't, we don't have to do that right now. I mean, I think the, the intent was, um, that given the constrictions of, of, of the social, the distance learning at the year, um, the goal was that when students returned to school this year, we're gonna be more reliant than ever on, uh, pre-assessment. Uh, and not just at the beginning of the year, but through the year. So as we identify, um, through pre-assessment where, um, student needs are, to your point, um, how that's gonna impact, um, the instruction and the pacing, whether it's full group, are we gonna have to work into small group and, and, um, and work with students in, uh, small group settings to address specific areas of, of, that, that we're there behind? And how do you match that need to your instructional, the, the instructional strategies that are available to you if you're in some type of distance learning or hybrid model, or even in the, in the class? Um, you know, given some of the constraints that are gonna be around the, um, the, the horseshoe tables and those different types of things that teachers are very reliant on to bring small groups together, it's gonna be, become more difficult to do that in the in-class learning environment. So I, I think, Ms. Max and Canelli, that, that's part of our planning, um, and being as responsive to that as possible, but going back to Mr. McCutty's point, uh, really prioritizing the social emotional piece first, as we bring students back and begin to work with students and staff. And then move, and, you know, now, I want to be really clear, those two things are not separate. You don't do one without, you, you can do them together. I, I really want to be, be clear on that, because I think that that's the confusion that we're dealing with to some degree. But they can be done together, and they can be done well, and that's some of the, that's some of the, um, direction we're gonna work with staff on.
Okay, you actually ended up answering both of my questions just for that one, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Ms. Jacobson?
Piggyback on that, I'm wondering if part of the plan is to incorporate those recovery services for the PT, the OT, and the speech? And I know Mr. McCutty and I had talked about that, but I'm wondering how that fits into the plan.
Rob McCutty, Executive Director of Special Education. Um, yes, we have discussed that in, in our committee meetings in terms of when it would be best and most appropriate and safest to, um, you know, start implementing those recovery services. That is a portion of our plan that we have discussed. It wasn't even part of a plan, it was something that we discussed because of the closure and because of the impact that, um, you know, the loss of face-to-face interaction between staff and particularly students with disabilities has negatively impacted student progress. So it is something that is on our minds and that we constantly are discussing, when would be the best time to implement? Like, we talked about potentially an extended-day program, two or three days a week. We actually talked about even doing like, um, a, a, a support program for students in Tier 3 that are not identified. But in terms of the implementation of that, we haven't come to a, um, hard conclusion on that now.
So my question is, as the students start to enter the buildings again, is that, is, do you bring CCS in, in more to work on that, you know, social anxiety of entering the buildings, of being in the classrooms? Is that part of the plan?
Where, in terms of our social and emotional learning, like initiatives, I had previously mentioned that we are looking at and we want to implement, and I, I think we have across the district, I think all the people on our subcommittee, um, from all levels, feel that like, right now, trauma-based, um, you know, or trauma-informed intervention is the way to go. The state, um, talks about it, and, um, so we're looking into, uh, a universal screen that will be easily identified, it will be able to assist us in identifying those students who were impacted, like, the most negatively, like, mental health-wise by this pandemic, and it will, you know, it'll be, give us more milder, um, indications of what students were less impacted, but could still use the support of a mental health professional in the school. And parents are all gonna be tied into this intervention or into the additional support that we're working. Additionally, we're looking at broad-range training in trauma, um, and other mental health supports and re-engagement efforts with families and with staff as well. That is gonna be a part of our plan, and it's a required part of the plan.
Okay. Ms. Jacobson?
Um, hi, Jen Jacobson. Just two quick questions, uh, Mr. Cummings. Um, I have a question around if we are looking at any types of standardization or expectations regarding asynchronous versus synchronous time, and when we are in distance learning model. Because we do know, and we've gotten anecdotal and feedback from plenty of people, that some people had a lot, some people had none, some, you know, it was just kind of all over the map. So if, do you have any thoughts on that at this time?
I do. The, what we're talking about with staff is the, that, um, the form of instruction to follow the, the instructional plan, and the structural plan should be designed to meet the learning objectives. So there are, there are best practices in synchronous, and there's best practices in asynchronous, and there's ti- good times to use both and good times not to use them, right? And what we're looking at, and this, this kind of goes into the training we're gonna need to do with everybody when everybody's back together at the beginning of the school year, is, um, you know, what I keep saying over and over is, it has to follow function. That, that the, um, the use of, of whole-class instruction with everybody together, when you look at what best practices are around that, it tends to be a limited amount of time, um, together and, um, for a direct piece of learning, a direct piece of instruction. And then breaking off from that into smaller group, uh, whether you're pulling students together into a small group, or, um, students themselves are working in small groups, but you're then, you're then following up individually with students to make sure that they've learned or needed additional support, or they needed extension activity. So, so balancing those two types of things, balancing the use of video to support that, um, those are all pieces that really have to follow the instructional design, and that's the way we're approaching it with staff, that do good teaching and then the, the tool follows. It's similar to the use of technology. Don't, don't plant for technology first, think about what you're trying to get the kids to accomplish, and then, then you identify the technology where that will deliver the goods.
Okay. Um, and then, just going back to middle school for a second, and I don't want to open the can of worms here, but it seems that if we look around, you know, the nation and different places, block seems to be better for this planning a little bit, because you're moving less. And I know that we don't want to go there right now, but for middle school, um, does that help at this point, or does that not help? And I don't really, I know I don't want to open the can of worms, but it does cut down on the amount of movement. It just does, it cuts it in half. So are we still looking at eight periods a day at middle school or, or some formation? Because, and I, I, it, we have to talk about these things that are somewhat difficult. So, um-
Yes.
It's just a fact, that that, that is a helpful format. So just if you, and if you don't want to talk about it now, that's fine, but it's just another thing.
I'd be glad to talk about it. We, we had a conversation, uh, Dr. Parrish, Dr. Savichik, and I met with the middle school team on Friday afternoon late, and we talked about this. We met relatively briefly, and it was really to put some ideas on the table, because they, they do a lot of their scheduling now, you know? Um, the high school schedule is built, the middle school schedule really starts building their schedule during the course of the summer. And, um, that was a topic that came up. And I told them, I said, you know, essentially, if, if that's something that you feel is good, you need to advocate for, then we're gonna have to come back to the board and we're gonna have to talk about it. Because you're right, it, it does two things. It reduces the amount of transitions during the course of the school day. The other thing it does is if we're in some type of distance learning or hybrid learning, um, it opens up the possibilities to have a very, to have a more fluid, functional synchronous, asynchronous environment when you've got a longer amount of time to build that in, right? You can meet the needs of more kids in that period of time than trying to rush through the 45 minutes. So that's something that they're beginning to work on, and we're gonna circle back with them on.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Cummings? Any other questions, Mr. Cummings? Okay, seeing none right now.
Okay, so I'm going to go to the survey and I'm going to, we did this in rehearsal, so hopefully this will work. I'm going to share my screen with you. Last time I tried to share a screen from this room, granted, it was a lot of teachers. The video started, the audio started to clock out a little bit. So I'm going to go to the, hang with me and you tell me in a minute. I'll say when this should be going. All right, you should be seeing the presentation?
It's starting.
Okay. It's loading here. Hopefully it's loading up. All right, I just got to share. I don't want to, trying to get it to go present. I want to get to present. There we go. It should be a present now.
It was there. I'm getting loading again.
Yep, doing it too.
Okay.
You got it?
I got it. Is everybody else hanging?
All right.
Yeah, it's working.
All right, just with the headset too because there was sound issues on the last time I did this. So it's fortunate you're not looking at me right now. All right.
And just before you stop, for the public, this is posted with the agenda, this presentation?
Yes.
Yes, if any members of the public do not have it, if you check the agenda link on the Board of Education website, this is attached to the agenda so you can follow along. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Cummings.
All right, so let me just go through this relatively quickly. We've got, again, these surveys were done over the period of two weeks. They concluded last Thursday. These are the number of responses we got. I will tell you that when I sent the remote reminder out before it closed, we had about 2,000 additional responses from families and about another 300 from staff. I, there's no doubt in my mind that parents probably responded multiple times to this. And we've got, you know, this is, to some degree, some mixed data in here. But again, the purpose of this just was to give the district a broad overview of kind of where people were and what we were dealing with. One of the things I'm going to show you towards the end is a couple of the slide captures that I took back last weekend or a weekend and a half ago. And just to see what, how that changed between the fifth and the ninth. But again, they, just the initial responses, I think you're going to see is they highlight the need for reassurance from the district that we're prepared to ensure staff and student safety. They really do offer an opportunity, given the amount of parents who are, seem at this point anyway, convinced not to send their students to school, that that's going to help us on the social distancing issues, both within school and on the buses. And, but they also raised this concern that we've already addressed tonight about the possibility of transients as they move between the two different learning environments that we're talking about. And again, this survey was not about hybrid. This survey was about, are you, do you want to come to school or do you want to stay in distance learning? There was no, do you want to come to school two or three days a week question in this. So we have 4,592 total responses from the parents. So I'll just go through these questions relatively quickly. So this question was really about this, you know, is there hard data in your family? Is somebody in your family that is ill and you cannot send your child to school? And as you can see, the number here is relatively small. 7% of families responded that there is somebody that would prevent their child from coming to school. Now, when you brought in the question and you ask instead, regardless of pre-existing conditions, would you still prefer to continue distance learning if possible in the fall until a vaccine is developed or distributed? The number goes from 7% to 18% as a solid guess. 46% of the people say no. And we'll talk in a little bit. I'm just going to highlight some of the differences between schools, for example, because I think that's something we have to deal with. And all this, what I'm presenting you right here is the full district. And this is also the only, the oldest child. I want to make it clear that this is, because we did ask about multiple children. So this is the oldest child response. And then the maybe, right, this great category, almost over a third of the parents are unsure of which way they wanted to go. And as I referenced earlier, if you answered maybe, which of the following situations would make you feel more comfortable sending your child to school? That second bar, you know, school district precautions is the only thing on this chart that we really can control. So that, low COVID-19 infection rates in Connecticut is clearly the greatest determinant for parents to make in this decision, as well as employment concerns. And then we've begun to break out some sense of the other issues. I will tell you that a lot of those are expansions of that second bar, school district precautions that they address, things like mass, social distancing guidelines, you know, categories, all those types of more detail in the logistics. If you are eligible for a bus, would you choose to drive your child to school and formally opt out of bus transportation until there's a vaccine or until mass social distancing guidelines change? So look at the blue together and look at the red. The morning, you could see that a preponderance of people would provide their own transportation. And that's true as well for the afternoon. Numbers are going to vary. I don't, you know, people answer the question. They don't exactly match up. There's not exactly the same amount of people taking the bus in the morning and the afternoon evidently. But again, it's just based on where people are with the question and how they respond to it. So we could see that, that people were, that the ability of people to drive their child to school will certainly help with social distancing guidelines on the bus, certainly at least through the first couple of categories that we're dealing with. But of course, as I mentioned earlier, this also raises the issue of what happened to traffic at the schools. So this is a breakout of that question five. And I did this only because as I looked at the data by school, I started to see some variability. And I, and again, this is just a sample. Obviously, it's just three different grades and only two schools at each level. But you could see that here at School A, at Elementary School Grade One, you know, 13.7% of the parents in that school would prefer to continue in distance learning if possible. And in the other school, it was 34%. And then, and then in the no category flips. And the maybe is even vastly different. So, you know, the more we looked at this, and Dr. Rasmussen and I spent some time on this this weekend looking at this data, one of the questions that emerged for us was, the first thought was this a reflection of socioeconomic conditions? You know, was this, was this the ability of parents who would be home be able to provide instruction to their students? And the more we looked at the data, while that certainly probably is an impact, the more we started to see it as a referendum, in a way, on the effectiveness of the distance learning that people encountered last year. So where people had good experiences, this is our conjecture at this point, where people had good experiences in distance learning, they were more willing to say yes to it than if they didn't have such great experiences. The mean number, by the way, is around 15, 16, 17% saying yes. So that 13.7 isn't a bad number. But that 34% is extraordinary, quite honestly, for that level, particularly at Grade One. The grade in seven, two of our middle schools represented here, and the numbers are pretty compatible, although the no is clearly different in school day or grade, more strident, I should say, in grade, in school day than it is in C. And now those numbers of no and maybe essentially flip. And then the high school is pretty comparable across the two high schools, those are our two high schools. They're pretty comparable when you look at them side by side for Grade 10 students. And then the next chart. So I broke this out just to see if there was some variability in the number of children and did that impact a person's answer? So again, you could, I won't read this through, but you can see that when we broke it out, and we asked for five children, you could also see that there's only six families in the district that meet the Cummings standard for number of children at home. But, and I was surprised. I was, I have to say, I was a little surprised and sad. But we've got that variability across the district as well. And it just started to raise questions about, would older siblings be home to take care of students, younger students, if we wind up in distance learning? So I just wanted to make you aware of this as well because it's one of the things that if we wind up in distance learning and we have conversations about childcare, it's one of the things that might impact some decisions around that. This is the staff, right? Again, we had just over 1,000 responses to this. So this is certified staff. We broke this up by certified and non-certified staff. This is again that question four. So 12.5% of the staff have either themselves or somebody at home that has a pre-existing condition that would prevent them from returning to work, to the in-person brick and mortar work. When you expand that question again to more, to broader, you start to hit this, you know, it's not thirds exactly, but you start to see that number really grow up. 28% of parents, excuse me, certified staff would prefer to stay in distance learning. 32.6 want to go back to school. And then there's again a gray middle of 39% that are not certain. This is the non-certified staff. That question about being able to come back, it's very similar numbers. It appears that the people who absolutely yes, want to stay, but I was just going to flip back. Here, hold on one second. This is the certified staff to that question. So 66% of certified staff, no. And it's all very similar on non-certified staff. Now, non-certified staff are the broader question. And again, relatively similar numbers with the certified staff about their ability and willingness to go back to school, given this question. And I just want to go back to the July 5th slide. So these are the slides that I did in preparation for an administrative workshop last Monday. And I captured the same data. So this is that question about, you first of all, see that there was 2,500 responses at that point. So again, about 2,000 more responses came in during the course of the week. The percentage of families that were absolutely, you know, were no, they wanted to stay in distance learning was about 50.6%. I think I should have written it down, but I think it was around 45%, 46% by the middle of that week. So it dropped. And the percentage of maybes increased. And this is certified staff. And it dropped as well by July 9th. Or the, so what we're seeing, you know, if you think about that happened that week, there was conversation around the CDC guidelines needing to be changed. The press increased its reporting of incidents of COVID transmission throughout the rest of the country. And the state of Connecticut started imposing its travel restrictions. So clearly, I raised this issue primarily to point to the transienty of some of these numbers and how we're going to have to, so much of what we can do, we can do. But we're going to also have to, we're going to have to be respectful and mindful of the environment in which our parents and families and staff are making their decisions because it's going to impact ultimately how the calls that people make. So again, next steps, our next, we talked about this. We're going to start collecting specific student-staff information to determine who has returned to brick and mortar classrooms and who wishes to remain in distance learning. And again, we're going to start putting names to this data. Align students of both learning environments to staff in each environment. So this is the question that was raised before. A number of you talked about this. But if we were to have, if we've got, the example I use though is third grade. So if we take third grade students, if we've got third grade students at a particular school, if we have enough of them to form a distance learning cohort, how do we do that? But if we've got, say, enough third graders, just a few, a handful of third graders at three or four schools, do we combine those for a distance learning class? Do the students remain in brick and mortar? Do we redistribute those students across the classroom so the class sizes are evenly distributed for the students remaining in brick and mortar? Do we have staff who are not able to come to work but are able to teach from home? And so they're teaching from home, but the students are actually in brick and mortar? And at what grades and in what subjects might that be necessary? You know, so there's a number of, a number of these possibilities that are going to present themselves to us that we're going to have to begin to look at once we've identified staffing and students and where they prefer to be and how they, where they can't help but be. We're going to finalize our curriculum and instructional, instructional, excuse me, and curriculum adjustments, finalize the draft plan for the state. Again, it's a draft plan. Prepare for changes in expectations, which is really everything that we're doing. Excuse me one second, I'll just find this. And then finally, communicate our plans out going forward to the community and the changes that occur and work with the community through all these iterations. So with that said, I'll drop it out of this and answer any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Gerber? First of all, thank you so much for all of the information that you've shared tonight. It's really incredibly overwhelming, but very thorough. I guess one question I have, and it's kind of unfair because I'm sure there's no real way for you to answer this, but I'm going to ask it anyway just to put it out there. Because those maybe, in all of the answers, the maybes are a very significant proportion of the responses that you got. And I know that you said you're moving forward to contact, you know, the people, the staff, or the students or the families who have definitely said, you know, as of at least the survey, that they are definitely not coming back, that they, you know, definitely coming back. But at some point, and again, this is making the assumption that things don't change between now and September 1st. But at what point will the maybes have to get off the fence? Do you think?
We're going to be asking them to get off the fence by the end of that first week in August, you know, or a few days into August. Because we've got, the task of lining people up is going to be so great. So we, we've got to get people to, people are going to have to commit to us. And I recognize the hesitancy to do that. And I think that, you know, but I, there's really no other way to begin the school year without that information, given the amount of time it's going to be to start balancing that with the staff at the same time.
Right, no, I realize that. I guess my only concern is just if people change their minds, then what? How does that work? I mean, again, that's assuming that everything stays the same. Obviously, if the numbers go up, if things change, if we get new guidance from the state, that changes things as well. But, you know, someone might just get a feeling in their gut, you know, wake up one morning and say, I can't, I cannot send my child to school. Or, you know what, I have to get back to work. My child has to go back to school, when they've said the other thing before. So, and I don't really know how you and the rest of the district can handle this because obviously, like you said, at some point you do need to start to move forward with your plans and the numbers, and it's so important. But by the same token, I just, knowing the kind of raw emotions that are already existing, and I'm sure they will only become more so as we get closer to the start of the school year. And so I just didn't know if there's some way to prepare for that or be prepared to address it, should there be some significant shift in one direction or the other?
I think, well, I'm going to be on vacation in August, the whole month, so I don't know where everybody's going to do. I think, I think the big thing that we're going to have to, you know, it's a great question, Ms. Gerber. I think the thing that, and I'm not looking to be rescued by the state, but I think that, I think back to that, that those two weeks in March and, you know, talking with Mr. Cleary at the time and thinking about what the state was going through. And ultimately, you know, thinking about, well, you know, if there's a case at Fairfield-Ludlow, how are we going to, all of the schools have to close? And then the whole decision just was taken from us, right? The whole, just, the health officials at some point have The whole, just, the health officials at some point have to move on that. And I think that, my sense is that, in what I see now even in this data, that's why I showed you those July 5th slides, is that the reality of how parents are feeling is ultimately going to drive what the state decides. I truly believe that. I don't think this is state, I think the school districts are going to become immobilized. You know, everyone is going to become mobilized if, if, I can say to parents, you know, August 8th, you tell us and that's it. But if they decide that they're not sending their kid to school, they're not sending their kid to school. I know that, you know? Are they going to send their kid to school, the kid's going to show up? I mean, there's, we don't have that authority or power, nor do we have the law behind us to say you can't do that. And honestly, we don't have the, we don't want to either. I mean, quite honestly, we have to recognize where parents are. So this will bring us to a next stage of planning, but I seriously think that, or I seriously consider that that stage of planning will be transient as well. So I know this is a lot of the, I apologize, but I just think the reality of the situation is ahead of us.
No, it's absolutely not. I mean, like I said, it's almost an impossible question to answer. But I guess it's just important to at least put that out there because I do think that, you know, there are a lot of, you know, parents and staff who, you know, feel a certain frustration, well, where's the plan, we need to see a plan and that kind of a thing. But I think the fact of the matter is that whatever plan is put forward, there's a very good chance that you'll have wildly varying reactions to it. And that someone may react to it one way one day, and then once they kind of sleep on it for a few days, then they're going to have a different reaction. So I think it's just important for everyone to try to be as patient and flexible with one another, knowing that this is such a moving target and everyone's trying to do what they can. And, but things are going to be changing a lot in the next month and a half. And so we just need to figure out a way to do that in a way that people aren't going to drive themselves and other people crazy and understand the differing views that are coming to kind of make this final decision as we move forward.
Right. You know, I think, you're absolutely right. And I think the thing that I would go back to, really what we've tried to do from the very beginning, is, you know, this is a very bureaucratic exercise ultimately, counting heads and deaths and all that type of thing. We cannot let the message of this become about the bureaucracy that this involves. It really has to be about the people making the best decisions for themselves and their families. And the fearful public schools will be there to support them in whichever choice they make. And people are, to your point, people are going to have to be patient. The school year is, the beginning of the school year is going to look very different than it normally does. You know, I've talked before about, you know, you're going to school on that first day and fifteen minutes in, how quiet the halls are. They're not going to be quiet fifteen minutes in this year. Not on the first day and probably not the second or third. They're going to be noisy because we're going to be figuring it out. And I just think that we're committed to doing best by the kids. I mean, we'll just continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you, Mrs. Gerber, for that. And I think that we also need just to be in our planning, that parents might say up until, you know, the first week in August, they're not sending their kids back, the day before school, they're not sending their kids back, the first day of school, they don't send their kids back. All their kids' friends go back and positive experience, and three days into school, they now want to send their kids back. So just for our planning, I think that we need to not cut it so close in terms of headroom. We need to plan for everybody potentially being back in school. Right now, for the public that is listening, I know we've gotten questions, will distance learning be an option for my children, my child? And I think that based on the guidance now, that answer is yes. Being in school right now, the answer is yes. So there is still flexibility there, but the state guidance in terms of distance learning does say temporary, and we're still awaiting that. But we're planning for kids to come back. Mrs. Jacobson.
Hi, Jen Jacobson. Quick question on that, and this may be more of a secondary question than the elementary level. But for scheduling purposes, I do think we need to be a little bit candid about changing of decisions and that that schedule would then look different than the one that they may have gotten before, right? So, or is counseling counting on having space available in all of the same courses that maybe you chose to take? So that does become a factor, I would imagine, that decisions do have some consequences possibly.
That's true.
Okay.
Mrs. McNally. Thank you. I will say, I appreciate the idea of being flexible to families and flexible to students. However, I've got to speak up from the teacher perspective here of, you've got, that to allow such flexibility is detrimental to the service of education that that teacher is trying to deliver. That if you have this transient nature to what the students are doing, at some point you are now hurting the students who are there every day and who made the commitment and who kept that commitment. And so while I appreciate the idea of, you know, I'm sure that there are certain laws and rules regarding what we can or can't do, to, I have no interest in being able to bend over backward and serve the daily interests of some families who will be in and out. And I'm not talking about that their child is having a health issue at that moment. But I do think that there need to be some stricter parameters. I also think that those parameters need to be communicated at the time that the parents are making their commitment, you know, so that they really can see the full picture of, would I make this decision now? Here is the timeline for changing it. Here's what happens if I do change it? You know, something as crazy as the school where I'm slated to attend, you know, if it's elementary school, has reached max on all of its sections, I'm going to have to go to a different school. I don't think we would do that. But I'm just giving examples that parents cannot just be given carte blanche to go in and out. It's not fair to staff. It's not fair to anybody in that. So that's just my opinion, but wanted to throw that out there.
Can I miss, Miss McNally comment on that? Because I want you to know, I agree with you. I don't mean to imply that it's an open revolving door. I think, one of the things I said about earlier that the superintendent's asking the commissioner for is guides around these kind of windows, you know, of being able to transition back and forth so that it would not be, it would not be random. It would be organized in a way that schools could prepare for students transitioning and then transition staff as necessary to accommodate transitioning students. Because right now, the guidance is that if a kid shows up, you have to take them. That's not going to be, that works with, as you know, as students, they don't show up all at once. But when they all start to show up at once, it's going to overwhelm our ability to deliver a quality educational program. So I do want you to know, I agree with you on this a hundred percent.
And I'll throw that right into the mix, that one of the things that will have absolutely nothing to do with COVID protections or anything else will be as people start to find out who their teachers are. And that's going to start to impact that. And that's just a reality. And it's not right that that's going to factor into these kinds of decisions. But one thing they said during the survey presentation that really caught my eye is the idea of staff being able to decide that, so I'm immediately picturing, we might not have, for the, who is delivering distance learning for the students who commit to that, we might not have the best staff member delivering that education if this isn't their forte. So I don't understand leaving it up to a staff member to decide to stay home if distance learning is something that they have not proven in these three months of March to June of being something that they knew well.
No, I think I probably ran to a bullet point there. One of the things that I, that I, we're talking about, first of all, this ability of staff to decide is still up in the air. I think that that's something that in process. The example, I'll go back to the example of the teacher who has to provide distance learning. So in the superintendent's call, one of the districts identified, I think it was, this is a what if, right? But they identified that they've got the BC calculus teacher, who is a highly specialized instructor. And that person is in a position where only they can, they have to teach from home, given some pre-existing condition in themselves or their family. Would they be allowed to do that? And then the students would then cycle into the classroom essentially. So that person would have their five preps, their five instructional periods. The school would probably have to provide some type of para or somebody in the room just to monitor the students. But the students would go to the, the students could be in school and then go to the teacher. Now, that's a simple scenario. The scenario gets more complicated when some of those students who are signed up for the BC course and, you know, need to take it for X number of reasons, they're either have to be home themselves or their parents are allowing them to stay home for distance learning. Now you've got a three-way instructional model, right? And how do you address that? It starts to become a different issue. You know, I mean, you might have to, going back to Ms. Jacobson's point, you have to rebalance the schedules. So fifteen kids who have to stay home are now put into one section, and that's more asynchronous. It's a math problem in itself, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
But one thing that you are saying there is that it's, now, I assume obviously that any teacher who's being given that option, not given an option, who is providing the documentation that they must stay home, is that a guarantee? Or is there at any point where we say, we don't, say if you had, you know, so many teachers provide documentation, we have to stay home, that there were now more teachers who were offering than that than we had students who wanted to take advantage of it and not enough teachers to service the kids who are in the buildings? Is this a guaranteed job position for them?
I don't know. I don't know if Ms. DC wants to comment on that or we're ready to comment on that. I think that's one of the questions that's coming up around the state, this very issue. I mean, you've seen the statistics, the percentage of educators, not just teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals that are over sixty is a big number.
Yeah.
And so that alone presents a logistical issue that a lot of districts are going to have to face.
Yeah, of course. I also saw in the survey that twenty percent of staff members said they might have a pre-existing condition, which is another factor I do not understand. You either have it or you don't. So that makes confusion may need to be clarified with them, that this, that's not about personal choice, that's about a legit medical issue.
Yes. That showed up in the survey too. Yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah. Ms. DC, is there anything you can add to that?
The only, so the two sort of parameters that we're working with on this, one is obviously the ADA, that if someone comes to us and requests a reasonable accommodation for their documented disability, in this case, an underlying medical condition, then we are required to at least engage in a conversation with them about whether or not we are able to reasonably accommodate that medical condition. Now, a year ago, if a teacher came to us and said, I need to stay home and teach from home, that would not be a reasonable accommodation, right? For someone who does have an underlying medical condition, if their role and responsibility is to be in the classroom teaching. So with the new world being what it is, there may be situations in which it is a reasonable accommodation, but I could also foresee situations in which it's not a reasonable accommodation, and we aren't necessarily going to provide that accommodation even though it's requested by the staff member. So that's sort of the first thing to keep in mind. The second thing to keep in mind, though, is that under the federal expansion of FMLA laws, we are required to, if a staff member does need to take FMLA time, it does have to be paid, and it cannot come out of their sick time, and it has to be paid up to two-thirds of their pay, up to $200 a day. So this could come, if we are going to be hardliners about it, it runs the risk of coming at a fairly high price tag for us if many staff members avail themselves of that option.
Okay, thank you. And actually, that was a perfect segue to what is my last question for right now, which is, obviously, the, you know, the Board of Finance had said, if we are anticipating issues, we do have that non-lapsing account. But at this point, do any of these plans come with price tags where you're already being able to anticipate how some of that account is going to get, start to be spent down? Is it going to be sufficient? Do you have any sense of that yet? And I fully acknowledge it might be far too early for that.
Yeah, I do think it will be. I think they're going to have ramifications. I think that the staffing issue alone and how this potentially plays out, you know, there's additional staff that might be needed at different points. I mean, we were talking even today, it's a relatively small amount, but if students are going to be eating lunch in the classrooms, how do we monitor behavior during that period, right? And is that going to be, require additional staffing just even for that period of time? So I suspect that we'll be, we'll be going through that account, you know, a lot of variable, length of time and all those other things. But I think those are, those are going to be issues we're clearly going to have to face as we go forward. And, you know, in putting in budgetary restrictions almost from the, clearly from the get-go this year, being cognizant of the unknown and how that's going to impact the budget is certainly an issue.
Okay, thank you.
It's worrisome.
Any other questions, Mr. Cummings, right now? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson. Just really quickly, I know that when you're going to be asking for people to commit one way or the other in early August, and I'm just looking at the bus transportation slide. And it does seem that we had a fair number, you know, a significant number of people who said they would be willing to provide their own transportation, and I would imagine that that's somewhat helpful, or very helpful, actually. At the same time that they're committing to our mode of delivery, are they also going to be asked to commit to the bus situation if they're coming to school?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to do that too because it's, it's not that we can reduce the number of buses really because, again, similar to the enrollment issue, we have to continue to provide, there's been, there's no relief legislatively to say, or by executive order, that you don't need to, you know, maintain a bus seat for everybody entitled to one. But I think we're going to have to think about how routes might be shortened because kids are not going to be picked up. It's not going to be a situation where I need the bus one day and I don't need it the next, right? You're going to have to kind of commit to a long term. But that also means that during the course of the year, bus routes are going to have to be modified as similarly, if students transition in and out.
Yeah, and it does seem that, you know, a little bit, at least anyway, that the afternoon seems to be a little bit more necessary for more people than the morning.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none. Mike, you can keep going.
Well, that's about what I have. So I don't know if there's any other questions. You know, there's, I'm sure there's information I didn't get to, that you have questions about. But I, we're working hard on getting the plans ready. Our internal deadline is actually this Friday. We're going to be sharing these back out with the administrators in the middle of next week for their comments and feedback and then getting things ready to the state. But as Ms. Vitale said, our expectation is as soon as we submit it, we're going to be in process of revision also the rest of the summer and certainly beyond it.
Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, yes, sorry, one last question, and this is to the chair. Are we going to have a meeting to go over that before it gets submitted? Or just have a review of that? Or what is the process for the, before the plan gets submitted to the state?
I do not think that we are going to have a meeting before that. Being that the plan will be revised, and I think that after the health data is provided, the guidance from the state on that, a meeting after that might be more helpful. For the board, we're going to be having a special meeting on August 4th. Hopefully, we'll have more guidance by then. That is my feeling right now. I mean, Mr. Cummings, if you think that you, we need to, the board needs to meet prior to it being submitted to the state, we can certainly schedule a meeting?
I don't think so because it really is a draft, and the board will have the ability to comment on it. I will tell you, I should have mentioned that we are expecting to meet with the town the following week to begin to go over the plan, as I talked about, to start to think about some of the ramifications for the town, issues where they can support us, the traffic issue being one that immediately springs to mind. But I think that, I think we're going to need to kind of release it into the world and then collect the feedback, and I would suspect that on the 4th will be the feedback, and I would suspect that on the fourth, we'll be talking with the board about revisions, um, based on that feedback that we've got.
Okay, thanks so much.
As well as we'll probably have preliminary data, survey, you know, survey data back for you at that point, too.
Ms. Gerber?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, Jessica Gerber, really quickly, um, I did just want to, I know Mr. Cummings had touched on it earlier, the State Board of Education meeting today, where they, uh, said that the one hundred and eighty day requirement, um, would be waived, and it would be one hundred and seventy-seven days allowing, but, but the specificity around it, my understanding is from reading it, is that those three days, the difference between one hundred and eighty, one hundred and seventy-seven, is for professional development prior to the start of the school year. So that would be something, obviously, that we will be discussing at the August fourth meeting, but just wanted to put it out there for the public, just to be aware that there will be discussions about impossible action regarding changing the calendar as a result of this State Board of Education, um, change.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. And we actually, um, briefly talked about it. Mike, I don't know if you have any initial thoughts you want to share with the board this time? It's fine if you don't, we can hold it, but, um...
No, I, I would only say that I think that, you know, um, I think that we definitely can use that time. I think we can use, there's, there's going to be a number of trainings that are going to be involved for our staff. You know, they're going to have to kind of essentially walk through the day. Just preliminary, I'd like to run, um, like a, like a, a dry, like a, oh, sorry, I'm losing my thread on, on, uh, words here today.
A dry run for busing.
A dry run, thank you. A dry run for busing, uh, you know, just basically even try to bring the kids in on the buses, have them go through the day. It wouldn't be a full day, obviously, uh, uh, but really take them through the paces, so that before students are actually in the building, we've kind of, we can use some time to identify any issues. So perhaps a shortened day, but, but, but really kind of run it as a shortened day and go through all the things that happen, so that everybody can kind of practice what this is going to look like. Uh, I think that would be a, a good use of one of those days when we're together, uh, prior to the start of school.
So yes, for the public, there is a, there is a, um, a chance that the first day of school might change, and you will know more August fourth on that. Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Um, so, thank you, Ms. Jen Jacobson, just following up on that question. For us, though, that would translate to one seventy-nine, correct? Because we're at one hundred and eighty-two, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just to piggyback that we would end up being at one seventy-nine if we took the three days. And I just, I just want to express that, you know, I just want to be really conscious of how many days we take off, um, throughout the next year. I know last spring, you know, it was kind of, we added days here, we added days there, and, um, you know, this is instructional time, so I just wanted to express that out as we head into this year, and being conscious of, you know, obviously, there are things that we need to take care of, and things come up, and transition periods and whatnot, but just, um, cutting days is, is, um, I don't know, I just wanted to put it out there that I feel like we should be careful with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any last questions for Mr. Cummings? Okay, seeing none. We will move on. Um, so for the next two items on the agenda, the approval of the new course AP Physics C, Mechanics, and Electrism and Mathematism, and the approval of the textbook to accompany that course. Um, I want to apologize to the board for just the lateness of getting this material to you. Um, in June, the year sort of got away from us. Ms. LaSalle is away on vacation. There were some questions that came up yesterday that I would like her to follow up on, um, so if there is not any objection, I am asking that we do not move this forward tonight, and we would move it forward on August fourth, so that the questions that were put forth over the last twenty-four hours can be properly addressed. Um, during that time, I ask the board to continue to share your thoughts, um, and your questions with the superintendent. Okay, so seeing no objection to just placing hold on those two agenda items, we will move forward to approval of the Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Replacement Project, state project number zero-five-one-zero-one-three-zero as complete. Recommend the motion, the Board of Education, except for the Fairfield Woods Middle School Roof Replacement Project, states what I just said, as complete. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. Um, Mr. Cummings, or Mr. Papa George, I don't know if you have any comments that you would like to make about this?
I would defer to Mr. Papa George.
So I don't really have many comments. I know this has been kind of a long process and way overdue for completion. I know we had some issues with leaks when it first went on that we had to deal with. They were with the rest, and we are no longer having issues with it. This was hopefully going to be before you several months back, but it got delayed, so now we are here with this.
Thank you. Um, do, and does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none, let's take the board, uh, Ms. Max Canelli, sorry.
Uh, just quickly, a quick one for everyone, but as of our closing out this project, does that put us in line for getting money from the state upon closing it out?
I do believe so. I, Sal has just logged on, so I'll let him answer that. If he logged on. Maybe having trouble. He said he would log on.
Well, he, he could get us the answer later, I guess. Wondering.
I think he's answering me in the text. It's coming in there. The answer is yes. That's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm. So yes, this was a, this was a reimbursable project.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George and Mr. Morabito for texting in. Um, so, seeing no other questions, we'll take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? Miss, do I have everybody? Yes. Um, all opposed? Absentient, seeing none. Motion ca, motion carries nine-zero. Adoption of policy is fifty-one forty-three point two and fifty-one forty-one point three. Um, recommend the motion, the Board of Education, adopt policy fifty-one forty-three point two, student, student one-on-one device insurance program. Ms. Max Canelli, seconded by Mr. Asa. Um, these policies are first read, and we're taking action on these policies tonight. Um, Ms. Max Canelli, I don't know if you have any opening comments on this?
Um, not really. I mean, I think the, uh, the policy sort of speaks for itself, which I also assume is the case of the board, as I didn't get too many questions. Um, one question that I did get, um, is that, uh, last, I believe, um, Mr. Cummings can correct me if I'm wrong, or Ms. Burns, who I thought was supposed to be on this, um, meeting, um, that last year, uh, the district was on the hook for, um, eight to ten thousand dollars for the type of work that would now be uncovered by this insurance program, um, but I don't know if there are any other questions.
Ms. Leifer?
Thanks for answering, um, that question. That was one I had submitted. I was curious how much we had spent last year on repairs and replacement, but what is the total cost for insurance?
My understanding, uh, is that it'll be about thirty dollars, and that will cover up to two replacement issues with, um, and that also includes a charger, um, with the Chromebook.
So thirty dollars per family, per child?
Per device, yeah.
Is there anything in place to help support our lower-income families with this?
I believe there is a plan that either that that would be at a half-price or, no, or for free, um, depending on your qualifications.
Are we going to be using free reduced-price lunch guidelines to determine that eligibility? Has that been determined yet? Sorry, I'm asking questions before they've been decided.
No, I, I can answer that. That, that's how we determine, uh, any price reductions, any fee reductions. We use the free and reduced, uh, price, uh, lunch price list for those determinations.
So, great. So those families will never have to, like, fill out a form to request the reduction in price? It will just ha, happen automatically?
Um, I don't know the answer to that yet. I think we'd have to work out the logistics of that with us, you know, we, I think we have to talk about that further.
All right. I just would be worried about it.
Would you like to avoid them?
Yeah, if we had, if we had to have people request, um, a reduction in price, that some, some wouldn't for various reasons, and might not know that they could, so that, that was why I was asking. Thank you.
And I just have one other question. This is just for Chromebooks, not for any other one-on-one devices that students might have. iPads for special education students, this is just the Chromebooks, correct? I'm seeing Ms. DC's head.
That's her.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Absentient? Okay, motion carries nine-zero. Moving on to the next policy, policies, recommend the motion, the Board of Education, adopt policy fifty-one forty-one point three, students' health assessments and immunizations. Mrs. Max Canelli, seconded by Mr. Peterson.
Um, okay, so, uh, sorry, but, uh, so here again, um, these are just a couple of, uh, changes requested by the Health Department, um, and so the two things I want to make clear, um, one, regarding vaccinations, that the public needs to understand that that is a completely separate topic from the physicals that students are required to have in. Uh, there is no wiggle room provided regarding the requirement of vaccinations at this time. Um, and again, that's not a Fairfield decision, that's a state decision. And so, uh, one thing that we did want to make sure that the public was aware of, as the, um, Jill Mitchell and, and the people in her office start contacting, uh, the parents who have not submitted that vaccination information yet, um, this is, should not be an issue where you are tied up with waiting for an appointment with a doctor. Um, if you're trying to go to your, um, doctor's practice, that usually can be done by a nurse technician, um, it's not something you're waiting on an appointment for. Additionally, um, our Board of Health, that they will do it here, uh, which is down by Oldfield, um, that they have their, their offices there. They do provide, um, the vaccinations actually free of charge. Um, they do have a ten-dollar administrative fee, which covers, I mean, obviously, they're using equipment, um, the syringe, et cetera, in order to do it, and so that that is being offered, and, and that has been offered for years, it's just not something we're usually talking about. Um, but in doing this, the vaccinations are still being required, ready for the start of school. Where the policy change, um, language is coming in, and I'm just seeing now, Mr. Peterson and Mrs. Jacobson, that the date was not taken out of that first paragraph there, but under the bullet points, but, oh, well. Um, that this, what is being done as a change here is, um, giving an extension for people getting their physicals. Um, if you have an incoming kindergartner, um, they are allowing that the, as of August two thousand eighteen, if your child has had a physical, that that will serve for the kindergarten year. Uh, for the students who are entering grades seven and ten, they have, um, and for athletes, there is now an extension that your physical is good, um, for fifteen months, um, unlike in the past what it has been between twelve to thirteen months. And so the policy change that we're asking for here, um, is just the acknowledgement that, um, that that extra time is being allotted, and then the bullet point was looking to get that comment in for clarification.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Max Canelli? Mr. Asa?
Before we vote on this, do we need to make an amendment for that date you wanted to come out?
I say yes, because it bothers me that it, I didn't, and, and I put it on me, I should have noticed that the draft we got, it hadn't been done. Um, but yes, if everyone could take a look on the first page, on page A of the policy, under the bullet points. Wired. Um, after where, so, um, to, Mrs. Gerber, afterward, it says all, all health assessments required above, and then delete, and done on or after August fifteenth, two thousand five. When is it's now twenty-twenty? We don't need that dated reference anymore.
So do you want to make that amendment, and I'll second it?
Yep.
Mrs. Max Canelli made the motion, I made motion to amend, Mr. Seconded by Mr. Asa. Um, any other, any questions about the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment? Motion carries nine-zero. Women, back to the main motion, as amended. Any, uh, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, I didn't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment, um, that when we discussed this in policy, um, our Health Director was pretty clear that we're missing a lot of the immunizations at this point. Um, so we had discussed in policy that we would need a pretty heavy push at this point to let everyone know about the clinic that's available to them in case they can't get into their doctor for these things, coming from the district, or principals, or social media, um, just to make sure everyone really knows that this is the case, um, and that there's this opportunity for them, uh, to get it done in time. So I just wanted to make that comment, um, that it's going to be pretty important, given our numbers right now at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rotelli.
Hi, thanks, Donna Rotelli. Uh, and just because we're here, and I'll just give a plug to public, down on Mona Terrace, so give us a call. You need to make an appointment.
Thank you for that, that plug for the Health Department. Um, any other comments, promotions, before we take it to a vote? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries nine-zero. Before I, um, adjourn, I just want to thank everybody for joining us for another special meeting. I knew, was hoping that we would have some time off this summer, but, uh, we've seen you again soon. To the staff, thank you all for, I can't even imagine the amount of hours you must be spending, um, we're very lucky to have you, and I hope that you are finding time in the midst of the summer to enjoy, enjoy the nice weather, and enjoy some time with your family. We appreciate the work that you're doing, and, um, look forward to the start of the school year, because, uh, it's going to be great. So with that, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Asa, seconded by Ms. Rotelli, all in favor? We adjourn to everybody, August fourth, if not sooner.